Time is seven o'clock. A call to order of the City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December 11th, 2024. Attendances by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in at 1-646-558-8656. Meeting ID 795-950-7035, pass code 907148. Agenda item two, serving on the commission this evening is Jim Babinski, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, myself, Greg Mealy are present. Serving remotely, Starly Arias, Tom Tullman, Greg Peresino. Also in attendance is our recording secretary, Christine Altman, and Jeremy Leifer, our city planner is also here. Moving on to agenda item number two, A, election of commission officers. We have number one, chairman nomination and election. Number two, vice chairman nomination and election. Number three, secretary nomination and election. Do we have any nominations?
So, so somebody, somebody that's not a current serving, serving officer can nominate. If you want to stick with the same board, you can just nominate all three names in one shot. Whoever, whoever wants to make that nomination, if that's the way we want to go.
And obviously I'm the chairman, Greg Peresino is the vice, and Donna is the secretary.
Yep. So it has to be somebody other than those three?
Any one of us?
Yep. Any, every, everybody can participate in this.
Why nominate those three to stay in the positions that they are?
Do I have any other nominations?
Got a second, got a second that and then?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
So move. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A, October 9th, 2024. Do I have a?
I'll move the minutes.
Who, who moved it?
That was Greg. Greg Peresino.
You weren't present.
I can, I can move. I can move. I was.
Yeah. Donovan can move it. Missing that evening, myself, Greg Peresino, Diane Carroll was missing and Starly was missing.
Okay, okay.
This is for the October 9th.
This is the October 9th. So I have a motion from Donovan. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Thank you. Minutes for approval, three B, November 13th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I think I can move those minutes.
All right. No, you could because you were seated that evening.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 13th.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Thank you. Moving on to agenda, item number four, public hearings, a proposed zoning regulation amendment. Applicant Bruce Worley, proposal amend section 3.1 subsection 4.60 gymnasiums and physical fitness centers to permit by site plan in the IP industrial park zone. The time is 7:04. Serving on the commission this evening, Jim Babinski, Donovan Riley, Donna Greco, Diane Carroll, Starly Arias, Tom Tullman, Greg Peresino, and myself, Greg Mealy. Also in attendance is our city planner, Jeremy Leifer, and our recording secretary, Christine Altman. Commissioner Greco, do you have a legal notice, please?
She does not yet. Rocking the bar.
Yeah. City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission, legal notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, in the City Hall Auditorium, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. One, proposed Torrington zoning regulation amendment, applicant Bruce Worley, proposal amend section 3.1 subsection 4.60 gymnasiums and physical fitness centers to add as a permitted use in the IP industrial park zone. Time of hearing, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Is the applicant in attendance?
I am.
Okay. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Bruce Worley, Jr., and I reside at 11 Beating House Road in Barkhamstead, Connecticut.
Thank you.
Yep.
What are you looking to do, sir?
Well, what we're looking to do is to move Nautilus Plus Fitness, which was on Winstead Road for quite a many years, to the northern end of Torrington for a couple of reasons. Number one, there is a congestion of fitness centers within the city of Torrington, and there's only so much business that is there. So my idea was to stay in Torrington but bring it to the outskirts, to bring it to the north part so that we can draw business from other surrounding towns, but keep the business in Torrington. And this space is fine, is very suited for those needs. And there's already been an incredible amount of interest from surrounding towns because there's nothing near them. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, no, admit, nope. There's somebody waiting to go in. You just go, yeah.
Just stand by, sir.
Okay.
All righty. Any commissioners have any questions so far? No. Jeremy, you have a memo? I'll dive into that, please.
Which building are they looking to go into?
230 Elagroso, LT Grasso Avenue. It's where the, the moving company of moving and storage, daily, moving and storage.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jer.
Bruce Worley has filed an application to amend the text of the zoning regulations in section 3.1 subsection 4.60 that regulates the location of gymnasiums and physical fitness centers to allow such uses, uses by site plan approval in the IP industrial park zone. This proposed regulation amendment would simply add a P to the use chart in the above section of the regulation, signifying that the use is permitted in the IP zone. Section 8.4.1 of the regulations states that all permitted uses require site plan approval except one, two, or three family residences, which require only administrative zoning permits. Our office consulted with the applicant to draft a regulation that meets both the needs of the applicant and the goals and recommendations of the City Plan of Conservation and Development. I am in support of this regulation, and it adds a use that is complementary to the industrial park zone as a use for both area employees and residents. Typical buildings constructed in the IP zones fit with the types of spaces needed for most gymnasium and physical fitness center uses. Other staff comments, Northwest Hills Council of Governments, Rob Phillips, Executive Director of NHCOG, responded in a letter to the city planner dated November 20th, 2024, with the following comments. The staff of the Northwest Hills Council of Governments finds no apparent conflict with regional plans or policies or the concerns of adjacent towns. The proposal received positive endorsements, without additional comment, by Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, Economic Development Director William Wallach, Torrington Area Health District Sanitarian Gabrielle Russo, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta, City Engineer Paul Kunsens, and Building Official Kevin Gillette. No other concerns or comments from department staff were received regarding this application. The proposed amendments are generally supported by the City Plan of Conservation and Development. In section eight, Business Development, a subsection titled Utilize Smart Growth Measures encourages creative reuse of industrial buildings for expanded uses. The proposal, the proposed amendment also aligns other parts of section eight, including retaining existing businesses and fostering the creation of small businesses by expanding the possible locations for gymnasiums and physical fitness centers. In my opinion, the use, the use for gymnasiums and physical fitness centers in the IP industrial park zone aligns with the goals and recommendations of the POCD and is a fitting use for existing and new buildings in the industrial park zone. I recommend approval of this proposed regulation amendment to section 3.1 subsection 4.60 of the zoning regulations as presented.
Thank you, Jeremy. Square footage of this facility and other facilities doesn't matter, correct?
No, no. It's for, for site plan, for site plan. It's more about parking, where the building's located, you know, setbacks, things, you know, access, things like that.
Any commissioners have any questions?
No.
I'll go to the audience. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes anyone on Zoom. Being none, does the applicant have anything else to summarize, or you're all set, sir?
You're muted.
You're muted. Hold on.
I do not, but thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Time is 7:11. I declare this public hearing closed. Go ahead, Donna.
I'd like to make a motion to approve proposed zoning regulation amendment by applicant Bruce Worley. Proposal zoning regulation amendment revisions to section 3.1 table of uses subsection 4.60 to allow the use as a permitted use in the IP industrial park zone. The effective date of the regulation change slash amendment shall be the day after publication of the legal notice of decision in the local newspaper.
Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Good luck, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'm sorry, Bruce, I'll follow up with you about, about the actual site plan application to change the use at this point.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good evening, sir.
You as well.
Time is 7:12. Moving on to agenda, item number five, old business. We have none. Moving on to agenda, item number six, new business, referral from city council under CGS 8-24-216, Bog Road, Harwinton. It's a land exchange between the City of Torrington and BNR Corporation, AKA Supreme Industries, in Harwinton, Connecticut. Eighty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet of city-owned land transferred to BNR Corporation and seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet from BNR to the City of Torrington along the Nagatuck River. Is the applicant in attendance? That's you, Paul.
Oh, unmute, unmute yourself.
Paul, you got unmute?
Yep. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay.
How are you? So what are you looking to do, sir?
So Supreme Industries approached the city back in the summer requesting to purchase a portion of land, city-owned land in Harwinton in order to expand their operations. As shown on the plan on the screen, it's the area that is in green. After reviewing this request, it occurred that there were, there was a portion of Supreme-owned land adjacent that currently the city has a trail easement through and adjacent to the Nagatuck River. And so it occurred that if we did a land exchange, the city would then be able to retain almost 500 feet of trail and, and own that land outright in exchange for the green area, a portion of city-owned land that is currently of, of real no use to the city or no, no apparent use for the, you know, foreseeable future. The land in green, the prop, or it was divided such that there was still an adequate right-of-way for the trail to continue through that will remain city property. And, and then the area in purple would become owned by the city, including the, the original 40 feet of width where the, where the trail would go through. The resulting benefit for the city then is that the city would have full control over the entire trail from the Toro Field to the WPCA. And we felt that would be quite a benefit for the city in exchange for the, the area in green that did not have any significance for the city. So we're asking that the commission consider this land exchange. And the, and the two, the two parcels in question are fairly similar in area and therefore would, would have, you know, the same value. So.
Paul, how's that work? I see in the purple area, we're actually acquiring part of the waterway?
Correct.
Is there any impact by that or any peculiarity or erity, so to speak, with that?
The, the, the Nagatuck River all through the city has, the, the land division varies considerably. And the city, over time, owns several areas of the Nagatuck River throughout its entire length that borders the city. And currently we don't see any issues with that, with acquiring that portion. It actually could benefit the city as well. There are potential future plans for the WPCA to reroute their sanitary sewer through the trail area, which now currently runs under the river. So this, acquiring this area in purple would also give us some flexibility on, on future sanitary sewer development.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other commissioners have any questions? Anybody remotely?
No.
Jeremy, you got a memo?
Yep.
At their November 18th, 2024 meeting, city council voted to forward the above referenced referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review under Connecticut General Statutes, section 8-24, which requires the commission to review and report for consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development, or any proposal to locate, relocate, substantially improve, acquire land for abandon, sell, or lease any airport, park, playground, school, or other municipally, municipally-owned property or public building. As stated in the memorandum attached from Paul Kunsens Deputy Public Works Director, City Engineer, the city would transfer 1.92 acres, eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet of city-owned land in the town of Harwinton to BNR Corporation, AKA Supreme Industries. In exchange, the city would receive 1.62 acres, seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet of land from BNR Corporation directly along the Nagatuck River. This newly acquired parcel will be utilized for a future extension of the Nagatuck River Greenway between Toro Field and the Water Resources Recovery Facility. References made to an attached plan titled BNR Corporation and Torrington WPCA vicinity sketch showing proposed land swap along a portion of Nagatuck River Greenway, Town of Harwinton and City of Torrington, Connecticut, by City of Torrington Engineering Department dated April 18th, 2024. The proposed sale and acquisition of land as described above as part of this land swap is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development, specifically Chapter Five, Open Space and Greenways. To implement portions of the Nagatuck River Greenway Plan, the plan encourages the acquisition of land for trail development and the use of innovative land use tools for trail expansion. Chapter Six, Community Character, also recommends preservation of scenic resources. Trail development of city-owned land directly adjacent to the Nagatuck River furthers this goal. I recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to make a favorable recommendation and report to the city council under requirements of CGS 8-24 regarding the above referenced property sale and acquisition.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any questions? No. Donna, you got a motion?
I do. I'd like to make a favorable report to city council. Location, Bog Road, Harwinton, assessors, map A8 block one lot one and map A8 block one lot four. Proposal, CGS 8-24, review for a proposed land swap to convey eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine square feet of city-owned land to BNR acquire seventy thousand six hundred and twenty-two square feet of land from BNR Corporation along the Nagatuck River for possible future multi-use trail. And that the Planning and Zoning Commission finds the proposed land conveyance, conveyance and acquisition to be in general consistency with Torrington's Plan of Conservation and Development.
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Paul, good luck with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, item six B, referral from city council under CGS 8-24, Plain Street abandonment. Discontinue Plain Street, including a sale of a parcel of city land at the end of Plain Street, approximately two acres in favor of ONG Industries. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Michael Magistralli, Corporation Council, representing the City of Torrington. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
This is a proposal that has been in the works for a while. It's really kind of a two-pronged approach. Part of it involves conveying to ONG, a little triangle of land, it's actually not a triangle, that the city owns, that's part of the flood control system that the city owns all along the Nagatuck River. So there's a band of, of land that follows the Nagatuck River that runs actually from St. John Place where St., it used to be St. Peter's School is. I don't know what it's called now. It was at Advance for a while. It runs from there all the way up to Wall Street and beyond. So this is a, a part of that. And this little piece that the city is proposing to convey to ONG is not necessary for that flood control system that we have there. It's, and it's actually a parcel that the city has no use for at all. ONG's plan is to merge that with 28 Plain Street. That actually is a condition of the sale. It'll, the deed will specifically say that that parcel is, is merged with 28 Plain Street. The other piece of this is the abandonment of Plain Street, which for all intents and purposes really is a driveway for ONG. There's no, the, the only public use is for members of the public who go into Plain Street to go to the, the Masonry Yard for ONG. So with the abandonment of Plain Street then, the common law is that abutting property owners own to the center line of the street. ONG owns everything on both sides of Plain Street, north and south. So they will end up owning it. And what they'll do with it as far as if they plan to subdivide it or do mergers, whatever, that'll be up to them. Because not shown on here, but the, the parcel that's adjacent to Plain Street going out to Wall Street, ONG owns that as well. So they, they own everything there.
That's the old Stereo King building, which is their IT facility.
So from the city's perspective, they have no use for the parcel that'll be conveyed to ONG and merged with Plain Street. It doesn't interfere with the, with the flood zone stuff. ONG will pay us a thousand dollars for that. And then the abandonment of Plain Street makes sense again because there really is no public use that's, that's happening there. And the city then will have that property put back on the tax rolls. I don't think it'll be a lot, but it'll be taxable then. But also the city won't have to plow it anymore, won't be responsible for maintenance, won't be responsible for any claims, you know, resulting from defects in the roadway. So from the city's perspective, it's really kind of a win-win. We sell a parcel for a thousand dollars that probably doesn't have much value, if any, at all. And again, it's, it's for all intents and purposes already ONG's driveway.
And, and Paul could probably speak to this too, but we're, we're retaining, we're retaining access easements to the river and, and sewer easements.
So if you look at the piece that's being conveyed, the eastern boundary of that, it's the one that it runs south, four degrees, 37 minutes, one second west, 26.52 feet. There will be an easement for access to the river right along that, that boundary line. And we'll also, even though Plain Street will be abandoned, there's the existing sanitary sewer down the middle, kind of, well, not quite the middle, but down Plain Street that the city also will retain. So the city's not really losing anything, not giving up anything.
Now, Michael, with this being changed over to ONG's property, being that it's a, basically a street, do they need to do any other modifications to this street? Or they can just leave it as is, where is?
No, and I would defer to Paul as the city engineer, but as far as the street itself goes, they can just leave it the way it is.
So it's basically their driveway now.
It's their driveway until they need to repave it or if they want to put cobblestones or whatever they want to do. It's, it'll be their property.
All right.
Well, they had some sort of, they had some crossing requirements, right, at the, at that, at that intersection?
So I've, I've asked that they extend the sidewalk across the entrance to make the, to make it look like it's a driveway cut versus a, versus a street intersection. And that would then make it look like a drive, more like a driveway and, and maintain the city's curb line and sidewalks within the right-of-way of Wall Street.
Is that closing up the entrance, Paul, or no?
It'll, no, it'll still remain the same width, but the concrete sidewalk will continue right through across, across the width of Plain, Plain Street.
Okay.
Because right now there's two curb cuts on each side or two ramps that, you know, make it look like a street. So we want to, we want to make it look like a driveway.
Gotcha. Okay.
And the only, the only other thing that we'll have to, we'll have to speak with, with ONG about is once the street is no longer a city street, 28 Plain, you can see it on the, on the map, is going to become an, an interior lot. So to, to make that compliant, there's actually two, you can't see it here, but there's actually two properties that front Wall Street that are both owned by ONG. They just have to merge it with one of those two. So, so it'll technically have street frontage.
Is there any signage on the entrance to Plain Street for the yard?
I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know. Probably Paul knows better than I do what signage.
Let me check.
Isn't there a sign on the fence that says ONG Mason Yard?
I think, yeah, on the northeast corner, the Mason Yard comes all the way to Wall. I believe that you're right. There's a sign on the fence, I believe.
I mean, I, the only reason I asked, having a sign on the fence just makes it a little bit clearer that it's an entry. So it becomes, you know, I like the idea of the curb cut and putting the sidewalk in, because I think you're just trying to define this yard now as it's a driveway as opposed to a street. So.
Did I see, did I see we've requested that they mark it as a private street? Did you say that, Paul? Or did I imagine that?
The street sign will be removed and then it'll be up to them what they, what they want to put up for, for signing. It's basically, it'll basically be a driveway then. So it won't have a, a street name anymore, technically.
Okay.
Now, just to move this to another conversation, for example, something like this, Paul, when, for example, Plain Street goes away, what triggers this in any GPS searches and so forth? Is there any reporting means that gets sent out that this is no longer a street? So if I've been looking for Plain Street, it's not coming up?
So we typically don't update Google, although we can. We, we've done that with it, with errors and mapping at times. But in this case, because the adjacent properties have Wall Street addresses and not Plain Street addresses, the, the, the elimination or the removal of the physical street itself won't affect anything like 911 or, or mail or anything like that for ONG.
Yeah. Cause I know back in the day, for example, when the city closed off Arthur Street down by the maintenance garage, you know, there was truckers that were coming in. It's like, you know, when did this get changed? Cause, you know, now they're jammed up. They can't travel through.
Yeah. So, so there is a, there is a wooden sign inside the fence that just says, oh, and, ONG Industries. That may be something we can suggest to them that they take that small sign that's attached to the fence and make it more, more prominent. But, but again, that's, that's probably more on them so that they can, you know, they're. so that they can, you know, they're, they probably want to do that anyway to be able to, to be able to make it easier for their clients to get in there.
Yeah, so making a, so making a suggestion and they can do it if they want.
Sure, yep. I will also mention that, that closing the street off and putting the curb, putting the sidewalk through was not done on Casanova when they abandoned that a couple of years ago, so they have agreed to do that at the same time as, as Plain Street.
Yeah, so twenty-eight, twenty-eight Plain, I mean, I don't know what the post office will do, but that would, that current twenty-eight Plain Street would become part of one of the other Wall Street addresses.
It'll have to become one, yeah. It, it won't be able to remain a Plain Street address. But it has to be merged with, with the property in the corner anyway, right?
I think, I think it can do, you can do either of them because they both have Wall Street frontage. There's, there's like two side by side there. It's whatever they prefer.
Is it, one quick question, does any of the residents that live on Wall Street park there now? Is parking allowed technically there or no? I, I, when I drive by there and look up, look up that street, I don't, I never see anybody parked there, but.
Maybe unofficially, there's a park in, the parking lots down, down kind of closer to the river.
Yeah.
But not officially.
Okay.
I'm thinking maybe it wouldn't make, maybe it makes sense in today's world, you know, with that technology that everybody depends upon, maybe we should be notifying Google when we do it, doing a thing like this. I'm kind of in favor of doing that, just to tell them, hey, there is no Plain Street anymore.
Do we know what the, what's the, does the, does the Mason Yard have an, yeah, it's got to have a Wall Street address, right? The Mason, the Mason Yard itself for like.
I don't know, wouldn't it have a Plain Street address? It's on Plain Street.
But if, well, even in its title block, ONG Industries, Plain Street, Torrington, Connecticut.
Maybe Commissioner Greco knows the answer to that.
Well, it fronts Wall Street, so.
Yeah.
It's Wall Street.
Yeah.
Well.
Pick on her, but I think she has some.
The address for ONG Mason Yard is nineteen Plain Street.
And I thought.
Okay.
So they're gonna have to change the address.
Correct, yeah.
I, I, I think we should let Google know that Plain Street's gone.
Yeah, we can do that. We've done it before in other situations.
All right, good.
A simple call.
Sure. Actually, I think you can do it on the internet. You just go on their maps.
Sounds good. Any other Commissioners have any questions?
Ready? Yep. Go ahead.
Thank you.
At their November twenty, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, City Council voted to forward the above referenced referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their review under Connecticut General Statutes eight dash twenty-four, which requires Commissioner review and report for consistency with the Plan of Conservation and Development for any proposal to locate, accept, abandon, widen, narrow, or extend any street, bridge, parkway, or other public way, or locate, relocate, substantially improve, acquire land for, abandon, sell, or lease any airport, park, playground, or other municipally-owned property or public building. As stated in the memorandum attached from Michael Magistralli, City of Torrington Corporation Council, the city would abandon Plain Street, a dead-end city street, and transfer the land consisting of the street right-of-way and additional abutting city land along the Nogatuck River to ONG Industries for a negotiated compensation to the city. All land abutting Plain Street is now owned by ONG Industries, making the street effectively a driveway for the exclusive use of ONG Industries. The city wishes to eliminate maintenance responsibilities and liability of retaining this dead-end street for the use of a single property owner. The city will retain an easement for maintenance of a sewer main and, and to retain river access for future maintenance and upkeep of the flood control infrastructure and river embankments. References made to an attached plan titled Property Survey, Map of Land on Plain Street to be conveyed to ONG Industries, Inc., Plain Street, Torrington, Connecticut, by Rica Associates LLC, dated November first, twenty twenty-four. The proposed Plain Street abandonment and sale of adjacent city land is consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development. Section four, Natural Resources establishes the goal of continued maintenance of flood protection areas, including the riverbanks and established flood control infrastructure. The city will retain an access easement for maintenance and management, and management in this proposed sale and abandonment, and street abandonment. Chapter twelve of the P O C D Transportation encourages the city to address other transportation issues, including evaluation of street network in the city and coordination with the Public Works Engineering Departments. I recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to make a favorable recommendation and report to the City Council under the requirements of CGS eight dash twenty-four regarding the above referenced city property, well, it shouldn't say city property lease, it should say street abandonment.
Thank you, Jeremy. Hey, Commissioners, have any questions? Collins? Anybody remote?
Also.
All right. Go ahead, Donna.
I'd like to make a favorable report to City Council, location Plain Street and adjacent property proposals, CGS eight dash twenty-four, review for abandonment of Plain Street and sale of a city-owned property adjacent to Plain Street, consisting of approximately two acres of land combined. And that the Planning and Zoning Commission finds the above city-street abandonment and property sale to be in general consistency with Torrington's Plan of Conservation and Development.
Second. Second.
Thank you, Greg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you. Mike, thanks for your input. Appreciate it. Moving on to agenda item number six C, Architectural Review Committee Appointments.
Yep, so we have a, we, we, we had one member actually resign, Alan Deulio moved out of state. So his regular slot became available on our, on A R C. So we're, we're looking to appoint John Sullivan as the full, to, to fill the, the, the slot that expires at the end of twenty twenty-six. He's a current alternate. Austin Walker is a new member that will fill John, John's current alternate member vacancy through the end of twenty twenty-six. And then Diane is due for a reappointment that would expire at the end of twenty twenty-seven. And then Paul and I need reappointments to the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move those appointments.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so move. Thank you.
You didn't have a choice, Paul.
That's right. Sorry, Paul. Moving on to agenda item number seven, Correspondence A, zoning and blight violation update. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant Planner, is with us this evening. Nate, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
Doing good. So I, I do these reports every six months or so, so I did a little bit of a summary of active cases as of twelve, thirteen, twenty twenty-three. This year, we have seventy-two active enforcement cases, and that's up two from this time last year, which was seventy. There's two new enforcement cases since this, you know, since the past month. I didn't actually end up going back, I should have done that. Cases with Corporation Council for legal action, right now we have six. We had three this time last year. Part of that is just, I think, just a little bit of a demonstration that our current Corporation Council is a little bit more aggressive with taking legal action against some of our offenders, so he's, he's not here.
We're gonna give him a pat on the back?
But yeah, that's been really, that's been really helpful having Judge Magistralli on, on board. He's, he's been really helpful for us in that. Cases under cease, active cease and desist orders, we had seventeen last year at this time, and there are seventeen now. They're not the same seventeen. We've had probably about half of those come into compliance since last year and about, you know, that amount come back in, so it's a wash for us. And then cases brought into compliance since the last report, four. It's likely because we, we were understaffed for the past eight months or so. We had to kind of put enforcement on the back burner to get all of our other administrative work done.
Welcome, Christine.
Christine is here now, which is wonderful, so, you know, hopefully we're looking to pick up on enforcement. You know, we basically got to the point where we were getting single notices out to everyone that was where complaints came in, but, you know, a lot of people don't respond to those and they end up falling on the back burner, so we're hopeful that next year we'll be able to ratchet up our enforcement. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
So do you want to, you want to give them an update on our, on our pig case?
Sure.
A little, kind of a brief update?
Yeah, that, that was in the paper, and we got some publicity for that, so. Just as a reminder, we had a property that had about an acre of, of land. This started in twenty twenty, I believe, with, with Jeremy.
With me, yeah.
They, there was numerous complaints, and it, it's basically taken almost five years to, and, and numerous back and forths with Superior Court to bring them into compliance. At this point, the pigs are all gone, other than one therapy pig that is, was permitted by Superior Court to live in the house, small pot-bellied pig, which is, you know, as normal as that can be. But there still is a good amount of junk and debris as they were breaking down all of the pens that they had, which were essentially just pallets that they, you know, had kind of leaned up against each other, so they're in the process of breaking all that down. There was a blight, a blight notice sent and citations started on it. So, you know, that really lit a fire under them to take care of the junk problem after the pigs were taken care of.
Where, where were we at for a height, like the most pigs that were there? Like fifty?
Fifty-six.
Yeah.
On the acre. Yeah, there was a lot of, lot of pot bellies, which are smaller, but there was quite a few, you know, thousand-pound pigs there.
Where did they all go?
Various, I think what, what ended up happening was, you know, our office tried to assist in contacting other shelters and sanctuaries and, you know, so we didn't have to, you know, send them all off to, to be processed and slaughtered or disposed of in some way. No one got back to us. It was kind of like radio silence. And as soon as Judge Magistralli brought a motion to Superior Court to take custody of the pigs so that they could be sent to, I think Plymouth Meats was the plan. As soon as that order came down, all of the rescues and sanctuaries, like, you know, it triggered them all, and they all came in, and within a couple of weeks, everything was gone, so I think those people just needed to be kind of feel the, feel the burn, you know, yeah, so. Anyway, so yeah, that was a great outcome, and there was also wetlands violations associated with that, all of which were taken care of. They got a permit and they actually removed. They were storing pig manure in a wetland on top of everything, so. But yeah, so that was, that was a great success. Trying to think of, there is also four-four-one Oak Ave. This was a, a case that went to cease and desist. There was a Z B A appeal from the applicant that had to do with an illegal occupying, illegally occupying a commercial garage space. It was kind of a complicated case, but it, it ended up that the Z B A upheld it. It went to, it started in Superior Court, but he never followed through the, the applicant, and he ended up going to prison. So we are basically at the point where we would start citations. He missed his period, period to re-appeal his cease and desist, so, you know, hopefully, hopefully we can get him into compliance after he gets out of prison.
Hey, Nate.
Greg just asked if it was the checkerboard garage.
It is the checkerboard garage.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it because I drive by when I go to, to Commercial Song.
Right.
But I have a question on Seventy Red Oak. What's the status of that piece of property?
Um, I mean, that would be a, a question for Ashley at this point. I mean, I know that she was, there was discussions with Mr. Rosa about doing a clean and lean, and I honestly don't know the status. It was kind of going back and forth whether or not he would permit the city to go in and clean up the property and what those conditions would be. I was on an initial visit with him and Ashley, and to me, it seemed like, it seemed like unlikely that he would agree to a clean and lean based on his attachment to a lot of the, the stuff on his site classified as junk, so.
So our, our option would be a court order to have that done rather than an agreement?
Right.
And, and using, yeah.
Or foreclosure on the property.
Yeah.
My understanding, my understanding is that we were gonna foreclose again.
Yeah, just, well, just saying about the, specifically to the clean and lean.
Is Mike there? Is Mike still there? Does he have any input?
No, he, he left, so, yeah, I, I wasn't in communication. That was like Ashley and Mr. Rosa and, and Mike and the mayor talking about that, so I can get her to give you an update on that. Because there, there has been a lot of movement on it recently, so there's kind of going back and forth several times. Especially since it seems like, you know, this is about the time he tries to go down to Florida.
Okay, thanks.
I have two, I have two comments.
Go ahead.
I had talked to Ashley over the summer about a house on Lower Charles Street just before the apartment building, same side.
Okay.
All overgrown, and there was a very peculiar situation where the person was sitting outside. I've never seen anybody. He was gonna do a wellness, ask for a wellness check, and I was just dressed very oddly, he or she, I'm not sure what it was, but it's just been overgrown for a long time.
Okay.
Just imagine what the inside looks like. But then my other question, what's the update with Mountain Top on the Winston Road?
Mountain Top on Winston Road, so.
That's a good question.
Yeah, so the last, that, that had been, wetlands had done a cease and desist order for the area within the formerly mapped wetlands. Planning and zoning had asked that operations be stopped anywhere, anywhere near that area or anywhere within that area.
And a, and buffer put up or something.
Right, exactly. We spoke to, they finally got an attorney. That attorney pushed to get their wetland survey done first because they said, listen, we can try to get this done quick, and so we can actually know where these wetlands are. We did, we did the resurvey, or they did the resurvey, and Jeremy and I walked the site. It seemed really clear that those wetlands had been mis-mapped when they were originally done. Just through a review of aerial imagery, you know, there was a, a sand mine pit area there going back to the nineteen fifties or seventies.
At least the seventies.
At least the seventies. And, you know, looking at the aerials and also had, going out with the soil scientists, and actually he was doing cores with me. I brought him to places that I thought might be concerning, and everywhere turned up that there weren't wetlands. So I do think it was, you know, maybe the prior wetland scientist had kind of just drew a line across where maybe there had been a small area of wetland, and they just kind of, for ease, didn't actually do the cores there. But to us, it, and, and they presented that material to inland wetlands, and that satisfied both staff and wetlands that, you know, the areas that they're operating now actually probably never were wetlands, at least since the inaction of any wetlands regulations. So we felt comfortable kind of backing off the gas. They're moving forward to try to remap all the wetlands on the property and to submit a map amendment to inland wetlands in January, just so that they can kind of set the record on what the wetlands actually are on that site, and then they've, they're working to get into contract with an engineer to create the plan that they need to submit for P and Z for the approval for the material processing.
Wetlands has to come first anyway, so I, it was just gonna muddy the water to, to try to pull them in here while they, while they had to do the wetlands mapping anyway.
And the concern was that there was a large area that would have been probably the largest violation in the city as far as size and amount of material, and so the idea was to try to take care of that first. But it looks like that area isn't nearly the concern it was. It's very minor, some, some minor areas of stone that could get into a water course but aren't even actually impacting it at this point, so. Good nu, good news.
Good news, obviously.
Yeah, definitely good news.
Right, it's moving forward. So I'm likely to propose some regulation amendments for, we have two, two February meetings for the second February meeting to make some tweaks to that, that processing and that was weird, the processing and, and earth excavation regulations. There were some, there were some changes to statute that really kind of muddied our ability in this particular situation to require a special exception. So I think we have to have some carve-outs to, for, to still have them come in every two years, but by site plan. So we can, we can still, we can still enforce the, the setbacks from the property lines and all the other stuff that we normally do with, with excavation operations. But I would, I would really like to get that sort of sorted before they come before us, too. So I, I think the timing probably works out pretty well with what they're doing for wetlands.
Yeah.
For sure. The quarry that's right across the street, the Haynes one?
Right.
So that's, that's obviously shut down, and then how does that work? They can reopen that as long as they're compliant with the permit that they pulled?
Well, I, I'm just not familiar with that.
You're talking about specifically for the Haynes part? Well, so, so Haynes is the, is the processing area. ONG doesn't do ONG doesn't do, from, from our last approval, ONG doesn't do any processing anymore up on the hill. They just excavate up there, and it all comes down and gets processed down below. I thi- I think it's sporadic, like they, they'll do a bunch all at once and then they stop, and then a bunch all at once, you know?
I'm just looking at the topography that's there, so it's pretty desolate looking, so is that?
Yeah. I've seen trucks coming in and out of there, but it's sporadic. Yeah, I mean, it, it's probably like they work for a day and then they don't work for a while and then they work for a day.
One day turn, you know, lock everything up.
Yeah. Could be the time of year too. They're not doing any, you know, big road, you know, paving jobs or anything like that this time of year, so. So they probably don't have the need for the material.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Nate?
No.
No. Alright.
Appreciate your update, Nate, thank you.
Good job.
Moving out to agenda item number seven B, discussion for solar project on West Hill Road. I'm gonna ask Jim Babinski to recuse himself. Please.
So you're gonna hang around in case there's any questions, alright? Okay. Um, so, I, I just brought this, I just had him, you know, this plan up because it kind of shows the whole overview of the project. Um, nothing's been submitted, uh, re- so nothing's been submitted to the sighting council yet. Um, what I really want to do, and, and I sent this, I, I, everybody's kind of gotten a look at this, um, and the reports. What I really wanted to do is just kind of poll everybody to see if, if we do want to go forward with making, making, uh, comments to the sighting council on this. We don't really have an application yet to make ca- make comments on, but we do have these plans to sort of jumpstart the, you know, I can, I can do something, I, I have the, I have this information to kind of get started if we want to make um, comments. I, I will say that I haven't had uh, unlike the, the project that was on Lover's Lane, I haven't had people calling or stopping in or voicing concerns to our office directly, so, um, there's a little bit of a difference there, but, uh, you know, it's really, I, I think the point we're at without, without an application yet, I just wanted to kind of poll the commissioners to see if, if I should get started on, on some sort of outline of some sort of comments. I think they'd mostly, just like the last application, I think it would mostly just revolve around enhanced screening. Um, so.
I thi- I think we should be that way, yeah. I think we should, you know, proactively look at what's going on, anticipation that you get an application. You know, get ready. I think the screening and all those kinds of things, those are legit, you know, when I'm
Paul's still on, he had, we, we, we actually met with the, uh, we met with the, the, uh, the company. Um, and, and kind of talked it over with them. Paul, you had, you, you had voiced maybe some concerns on the connection for the for the stormwater, um, that they're, they're taking back and, and, you know, kind of working with, uh, you know, they asked, they asked me what we would normally require if this was a local approval. I said, there's a house right there. So we would ask for as much screening as you can possibly put next to that, uh, next to that retention basin, uh, kind of on the upper part, the north, the north end, uh, at the street.
What about the, what about the anchoring system for the frames and stuff to hold it? Didn't we make some comment and requirement about if the place was to be abandoned, they would all have to be removed?
Yeah, the, 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 um, stat- state statute actually changed on that.
Did it? Okay.
It is required. I think the one, there was the one, when we did the one in Litchfield, when the one came through in Litchfield, they didn't have that requirement.
Right, right.
A lot of concern about that, but the statutes, the statutes have changed, so they do have to remove all the below ground sort of supports and mounts and stuff too, if it was ever to be abandoned. When they, when they submit to the sighting council, there'll be a, uh, there'll be, um, I don't think they call it an abandonment plan, but a, but a, you know, a plan if they ever discontinue.
Yeah.
Looking at this plan, it looks like there's vegetation all the way around the perimeter shown, correct?
Yeah, Jim, do you know the, do you know the approximate, uh, area of clearing?
Ten acres.
Uh, no, I don't, but I know it's, uh, it's less than if we
It would have been less than the, uh, than the subdivision.
Subdivision.
Yeah.
And just to let you know that the property is being split into two lots. The, if you're going into the property, the property on the left hand side is going to be the solar, uh, project, which is approximately twenty-three acres. Seventeen acres my wife Maureen and I are gonna keep. On the right hand side, it's gonna be under a P A four ninety, and we're presently looking into to do a, um, wounded warrior project in dedication to my father who was in the Battle of the Bullets and then her, uh, uncle who was in the Vietnam War that flew in the Air Force. So, uh, for housing for veterans. Uh, you know, one house, two houses, whatever.
Okay.
But, uh, that whole seventeen acres right now will stay as a P A four ninety. It won't be cleared, and if we do do anything, it'll be only for like, uh, two acre lot to put a house on.
Okay. So yeah, basically, I think what they said was it's split by that right, that, that easement, that right of way, there, the easement.
Yeah, yeah, we have it come up with that, you know, exactly, but, uh, the whole first part of it will be a ingress egress easement. Um, shared by both parcels.
Correct.
And there's only one dwelling that's really adjacent to the entry here. One on one side, actually one closer to the road.
And the panels sit back off West Hill Road approximately six hundred feet. Okay. So it's not like they're right on the road.
So it looks like the, uh, the east side of it, they're retaining a lot of that that existing tree cover kind of along the, the property line, but it's the, the west, the west side that I, you know, I said, you know, look into, you know, in your, in your planning, look into it, some additional buffering on that, on that piece. You gotta maintain, kind of maintain the integrity of that, of that basin too, but they're gonna, they're gonna look into it anyway.
Yeah, I, I had suggested that they do uh, screening on that side, going down on the left side, or the, the left side of the, uh, gas line.
Yeah, there's not a ton of room there, but, you know, they, they're gonna go back and at least look at it.
So aesthetically, what will it look like from West Hill?
You really
Not see anything.
Won't even see it.
Won't see it.
You won't see anything?
No.
You, you'll see the, the access in the, in that ba- you'll see that basin.
That's it. And it's, it'll be just like a regular driveway going in for a house.
Yeah.
And everything on the left hand side as you're going in, uh, the big piece that sticks out, um, that's all the, um, I think it's Boy Scout camp. And that's very steep and rocky, and so that'll never be developed. I think there's wetlands in there also.
Yep.
Do these make a considerable amount of noise?
Not like any noise.
No noise?
Tax purposes, just to guy, let you guys know. At present, this whole property of forty plus acres are paying a hundred and eighty-five dollars in taxes
Mm-hmm.
because it's under a P A four ninety.
Yep.
With the solar portion going in, uh, they would be paying the town over forty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
So tax wise, it's a benefit for the town.
Yearly?
Yearly.
Oh.
Yeah.
From day one?
Yeah, as soon as we, because the panels, I guess, are a personal property or something. I, I'm not sure how they assess it.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's what we were told.
Um, and, and the reason, kind of the reason why the only, we just do some comments on, on screening and buffering is because if you look at our P O C D, it's supportive of these projects.
Yeah.
So at any, anytime there's a, there's one of these solar projects, we, if we're looking exclusively at our P O C D, it's it's it aligns with the goals, so.
I'm just saying, I mean, they're taxed as of day one, though, when they start the project, or is it once?
Once, that I don't, once it's energized, yeah.
And at present, um, well, last time I knew, there were some of the neighbors using the property to ride all their horses. Okay, which sometimes they don't have the right to do, but, uh, I did let them do that. So.
So the utility tie-in is pretty much right at the end of the driveway that they're gonna connect to?
Right. It goes, uh, there'll be, uh, uh, electric poles going down the left side of the gravel driveway, which is around twelve or fifteen feet wide. It'll be a processed driveway. So.
So then in twenty years or so, whatever the life expectancy is, this land just goes back to a P A? The, to the
Well, the thing is, I'm selling it to them.
Oh, you're selling it.
Okay, so they own it. I have nothing to do with it. I just have the seventeen acres and that's all I worry about.
Uh, the likelihood of it lasting longer than twenty is pretty high these days. The solar panels have become better and better. And so I would expect it to be well past twenty-five years. And then it's a simple change out. I mean, at that point, you just put, you can put new solar panels on it, so. I think if it generates electricity, it'll always generate electricity.
I think the key component is, it's that far off the road, it's not affecting anybody's view and so forth.
Right, right, exactly, exactly. The purse, the house that's on the left hand side as you go down the driveway, behind their house, they have approximately six to seven acres who completely wooded.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you know, otherwise they're not gonna see any.
No.
Okay. Alrighty. Yeah, so, uh, so that's basically it. If, 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 um, if we think it's worthwhile to, to start crafting some, I mean, it may be a few months before we submit anything officially, but just whether we need to start work, want to start working on it or not.
I say go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, moving out to agenda item number seven C, two thousand twenty-five meeting schedule, uh, I believe.
So Christine uh, emailed everybody that. Yeah, so we're, uh, the two months, the two double meeting months are, uh, are, we put on February and June this year, because we, we had it, we had them in I think October the last few years um, prior, and, and there really hasn't been the kind of activity that need, that, you know, requires two meetings. So the February meeting, the, the, the second meeting, as I already mentioned, will use it as a, as a regulation amendment meeting um, around any other applications we may have. And then June's usually always busy. May and June are usually always busy, so we need those, those extra meetings. Otherwise, it's third, third Wednesday of the month, the rest of the year.
And worst case, if something came up that was major, we'd add a meeting.
We can do a special meeting, yeah. Yep.
Alrighty. Do we need to accept this, or are we alright?
Uh, no, no, no.
Randy, I think we're good. Any questions on the schedule?
Nope.
Meeting dates? No. Alright. Time is eight oh two. Moving out to agenda item number eight, adjournment.
I move adjourn.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Posed, so moved. Thank you, everyone.
Have it, have everyone, hopefully everyone gets a nice Christmas present from their favorite person.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you. Stay well, my friend.
Yes, yeah, bye.